I'd like to call an order in the March 12, 2020 regular meeting of the Peters Township Planning Commission. Ed Rolkall.
Mr. Selepus will not be here. Mr. Magrino will not be here. Mr. Wiley?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Ms. Corbuk?
Here.
Mr. Mills will not be here and Mr. Kartaphyllus will not be here tonight, but we do have a quorum.
Can I get a motion to approve? I should say, are there any changes to the minutes from the February 13, 2020 regular meeting? I'm hearing none. Can I get a motion to approve said minutes?
I'll make a motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Reports and correspondence?
None.
Site plan subdivisions filed for review?
We have two. We have the site plan for the A&amp;S Office Warehouse Project on Venetia Road. They got their conditional use approval from council, so the next step is site plan approval. And we have the preliminary plan for the Lutes Farm Plan Residential Subdivision on Thomas Road.
Any changes to the agenda?
No.
Any audience comments on items not on the agenda? Any changes to old business?
No.
All right. New business. Page 8A, Planning Commission Recommendation for Just About Farms Phase Two Final Plan, Bower Hill Road, Harvest View Drive.
The Just About Development LLC, who's developing the Just About Farms subdivision on Just About Road, is seeking township approval for Phase Two of the development. Phase One is in place. Homes are being built. Phase Two, you could go to it Seth, Phase Two will connect Harvest View Drive up from Just About Road up to Bower Hill Road. This development is, the property that this Just About Farms developed on is zoned low-density residential. It's in the CR Conservation Residential Overlay. The plan developed using the Conservation Residential Overlay District zoning requirements. It's a 26.16 acre property. Total lots is 48. Phase Two is the last 19 lots. The overall density in the Just About Farms plan is 1.8 lots per acre. They are setting aside nine, almost 10 acres as open space. It nets out to 7.35 acres of open space. That deducts out sanitary sewer easements, stormwater management easements. Access to this development will have an access to Just About Road in Phase One, and Phase Two provides access to Bower Hill Road. The Bower Hill Road access will include a raised intersection where Harvest View Drive meets Bower Hill Road. There'll be a raised intersection on Bower Hill Road. There's schools close to where this will connect. Bower Hill Elementary School's up there, as well as the Bower Schoolhouse Learning Center's up there, so we got them to agree to the raised intersection on Bower Hill Road. That'll be part of Phase Two public improvements. Like I said, they are way over their 25% open space. 6.4 acres was supposed to be set aside. They set aside almost 10 acres as open space.
Can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
I just want to confirm, based on your note here, just for our record, the township is not assuming, is not going to assume any responsibility for the open space. It's all under the HOA, correct?
Correct.
I just want to make sure that all of, you know, I know that we mentioned some specific things in the note, I just want to make sure.
That's good. Yep.
Nothing, correct?
No township-owned open space at all, be HOA open space. They have a walking trail through that open space as well. Stormwater management is all handled with a big stormwater detention facility that was constructed as part of Phase One down on, down closer to Just About Road. There's a big detention facility. All the lots from both Phases One and Two and all the roads all drain to that stormwater detention basin, and that's constructed. Sanitary sewer, this is in the Peters Township Sanitary Authority watershed. DEP planning module's approved. Phase One, all the sanitary sewers are in place, and they are actually, they have approval from the sanitary authority for the Phase Two sanitary sewers. One good thing about this development is that there are easements provided that will allow adjoining residential homes on Snyder as well as on Bower Hill Road to, at some point in the future, connect to these public sewers. So there are easements in place that will be recorded on the final plan that will allow, for example, this is all torn down up here. This is an old area, but for example, they're bringing the sewers up. This house up here does not have public sewers, and they'll be tying into the public sewer. And if we could scan out, spin out the other way towards Snyder. There are easements over here on the Snyder roadside. This, all Snyder Road is on septic system, so there are easements in place that will allow sewers to be extended up to Snyder at some point in the future. Each lot in the Just About Farms is subject to a $1,386 traffic impact fee. Those are paid at the time of building permit for each lot. Do we have pictures of the homes? The units, those are actual units. They're built in Phase One. Craftsman style. They range in square footage from approximately 700 to 2,400 square feet. They're in the 500,000 and up range, and they include both front entry and side entry options. Staff's recommending that we approve the Phase Two Final Plan for Just About Farms, subject to those seven conditions listed in my memo to you dated March 5, 2020.
Just a question. I saw that the number four, it says, they are work to be monitored by the geotechnical engineer. Were there any issues in the first Phase One at all?
No.
No. What percentage of the lots have been sold in Phase One?
Well, that's a good question. There's been quite a few. I'm gonna say over half.
Okay.
There's a, I think on the backside of the top side there, there are only a few houses built along that top road, I think, but most of the lots on the bottom portion have been, I think, a bit built up.
Yeah.
I drove through.
Yeah.
About a month or so ago.
Good number here.
Yep.
A few up here have been built, a few on the backside, but most of what you see is the lots built there.
Is this connected to Bower Hill School or a bathroom?
Sidewalks, there's sidewalks on, throughout this entire plan on both sides of the street. There is no sidewalk on Bower Hill Road, though, to take you to the school.
It's pretty steep up the hill, right?
It is a little steep, but once you get to Bower Hill, it levels out. At some point in the future, you know, maybe we can get a sidewalk to walk to the school at some point.
You know what would actually be nice, and this is kind of aside, I think right where this road comes in, it's between that neighborhood, the neighborhood that's right there in Bower Hill, right? I see people constantly walking between that neighborhood and the school whenever I go over there.
Oh, yeah.
It would be nice, even if that's the only section of sidewalk that we could
Correct.
manage to get built, like, now that this road connects up, it would just be nice to get a sidewalk.
Yeah, that's the Woodlands neighborhood that has a sidewalk connection along Bower Hill to the Bower Hill Elementary School.
Are they using the overlay option A or option B?
They used...
It's on the plan, it says option A. Description says option.
I think it was option A. They used the 25% open space. You know what, I want to, the sidewalks on Bower Hill Road, are there sidewalks on Bower Hill Road? Are we requiring that?
They lead to, coming out, they lead to the Woodlands, but not going the other way.
It does?
And the sidewalk goes like the edge of Woodlands, and then I think there's like a gap, and then, but on the other side, there's no.
You know what, we are requiring as part of Just About Farms, and we are putting a sidewalk on their frontage, which is a good one.
Oh, good.
On long Bower Hill.
It's not be a, make it a continuous.
The engineer representing Eddie Holmes is here, if you have any questions.
All right, can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion. Planning Commission approved the recommendation for Just About Farms Phase Two Final Plan with the condition stated forth by the planning department.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item B, Planning Commission Recommendation, Sugar Brook Preliminary Plan, Sugar Park.
Galway Land Partners LP is currently under contract for a piece of property approximately 28 acres in size near the intersection of Sugar Camp Road and Brookwood Road as part of a 33-lot proposed subdivision entitled Sugar Brook. The development is zoned low-density residential for the master parcel with the mixed residential overlay. They will be taking advantage of the mixed residential overlay as part of this proposal. The development includes a large cul-de-sac that comes off of Sugar Camp Road with some additional interior roads. The cul-de-sac would ultimately go to the edge of the property line as kind of a temporary cul-de-sac that could potentially facilitate the connection further on to Marie Drive. Again, it is 33 lots. It is a mix of standard single-family homes and what we deem as patio homes as part of our recent zoning ordinance amendments that allow for a secondary housing type in the mixed residential overlay if they utilize lots that are 10,000 square feet in size or less, so it accommodates for what they're determining to be patio homes. We are intending to provide a pedestrian connection to the Arrowhead Trail as part of this development. In regard to stormwater management, they are proposing a large stormwater management facility located at the southern end of the development and around an open space parcel that will ultimately drain into the creek that runs along the rear of the property. They're also proposing a small rain garden in this location that will capture some of the runoff from nearby streets and nearby lots that will also drain into that creek, but the majority of the stormwater retained from the site will be collected into that larger basin. In regard to open space, their minimum requirement in the mixed residential overlay is 10%. We're currently looking at an allotment of 34% open space dedicated to the future HOA. That, again, does not include any of the stormwater management facilities, so is a substantial amount of open space well beyond what they are required to dedicate to the HOA. In terms of sanitary sewer service, this would be sanitary sewer service provided through the Peters Township Sanitary Authority. There is a sanitary line that exists today, runs through the rear of the property. They would simply be connecting into that, providing sanitary service for the lots within the development. As a standard with all developments in the township, each lot will be subject to a $1,500 traffic impact fee that will be subject to payment at the time of building permit issuance. The proposed homes within the development, again, are the mix of single-family and patio style. They range from $500,000 and up for the patio-style homes and $700,000 up for the standard single-family homes. What you're looking at there are two examples of the more standard single-family style homes, and then their patio-style homes that would go in the smaller lots. At this time, a geotechnical report has not been provided by the applicant. We were working through some traffic issues, so we allowed them to proceed with preliminary plan application without providing a geotechnical report. We will require that that be provided before we go back to Planning Commission for final plan approval. We won't even bring it to Planning Commission until we receive that. In regard to that traffic, the developer will be dedicating an additional amount of right-of-way near the intersection of Sugar Camp Road and Brookwood Road for potential right-of-way improvements. The intersection of Sugar Camp and Brookwood is a defined traffic improvement project as part of our capital improvement program and would be funded, could be funded theoretically through traffic impact fees, but at this time, it is not exactly necessary that we complete that improvement, but we are going to be getting the dedicated right-of-way from the developer. Whenever we do need to go in and make this improvement to the intersection, we'll have the space we need to make that happen. It is a state road, so when we have that available right-of-way to be able to just give to PNDOT fee simple, it'll be a much simpler process than having to go and acquire right-of-way in the future. As part of that, because it runs through some of their open space, we will also be establishing a landscaping easement, so the HOA can plant landscaping and maintain it on this township-owned parcel until we have to go in and do those right-of-way improvements. Planning staff is recommending approval of the Sugar Brook Preliminary Plan. It would be a preliminary plan recommendation by Planning Commission to council. It's gonna go to council for preliminary plan approval and then back to Planning Commission for final plan approval, but we are recommending approval of the preliminary plan subject to the 24 conditions enumerated in my March 5, 2020 report. I'm here to answer any questions the Planning Commission may have, and we also have the engineer and applicant here as well.
Seth, number 19, I'm not familiar with the unit table.
Yeah, when we did those recent zoning ordinance amendments, when we created that additional housing type for patio homes, those 10,000 square feet lots or less, in order to maintain the intent of the mixed residential overlay, we also established a minimum percentage of each housing type. It's 25% when you only have two different housing types. We just want that on the plan, highlighting that they're utilizing what they need to do to maintain compliance with those zoning ordinance.
So, I'm gonna miss this. So, to the, the amount of property set aside for the future right-of-ways is included in the open space number?
It is not included in the open space. It will not be open space. It will be a separate parcel.
Okay, okay.
Dedicated to the township so that there's no question in the future what happens with it. It is a, it's its own piece of property that we can then give to PNDOT whenever we're ready to do those roadway improvements.
So, as far as for us, then, we'd be then, we'd be then responsible for like mowing and doing that for that time?
The intent with the landscaping easement, I think, is that the HOA would maintain most of it, but in regard to like site distance and the intersection and grasses and those types of things.
But what about in the interim, before all that happens, before any improvements are actually made?
If it needs maintained, the township would maintain it, but we're not anticipating that the...
Not even grass cutting.
Correct.
So, follow-up to that. Is it a portion of D or is it?
It's a portion of both sides. The potential improvements include a center turning lane left into development and then some additional turning lanes potentially out of the development, so we need best space on both sides, A and D, to accommodate that. We anticipate it being approximately here to, I think, to the edge of the property line is what we determine, so.
But shouldn't number 14 show A and D on?
It should, yes. You're correct. You can change that. Thank you.
So, and you said this area had already been designated for improvements before this development would have been proposed?
Correct, yeah. It's part of our, it's one of the identified improvements through our capital improvement program.
And I just, I'm kind of trouble picturing the area. What was the reason? Is it just its owner, its name?
Our capital improvement program is based on full build-out of the township, and we identified potential intersections that could encounter issues as part of that, and this is one of them.
Okay.
Where are the two mailboxes to be located?
Two cluster mailboxes are center of the screen right now.
Oh, okay.
There's the pull-off space for each one of them, yep.
I think there's some confusion there.
Someone up here, start to state your names for the folks on TV.
My name is Stephen Victor, Victor Wetzel, Simpsons. The original application had a CPU here and another one here. Discussions with the staff, just our own thinking about it, was we took this one out and just made a singular one right here. So, what we have is a gazebo, and within the gazebo, so it gives us the canopy, would be a CPU that would handle all 33 lots, and we've provided three parking spaces here, one of them being an ADA, and three parking spaces here. And making it here the entrance means that if you're coming in and want to stop and get it, or if you're leaving, you can come in and stop here. So, it's the most convenient course without causing confusion at this intersection here, so bring it back here, and it becomes a visual focus itself by making it, you know, both the meeting point, the gazebo, at the open space park area here, and then the mailboxes.
Seth, anticipating school buses to be able to enter the development?
Yep.
And if so, has the school district looked at those?
The school district.
I mean, the bleak tree line that it just...
I believe they have looked at this one, but we will confirm with them. In regard to the cluster mailbox location as well, it's, it still needs to be approved by the postal master, but we anticipate that being a pretty decent location for it. They try to get it as close.
Just wanted to make sure, clarify, because there are two, on the, on your memo, it says there will be two cluster mailbox units.
Correct.
We'll update that.
Yep.
And this is in the Venetia zip code, so we need their, the Venetia postmaster needs to sign off on it.
Yep.
What are the setbacks in this particular area?
Minimum 20-foot front yard setback, maximum 25. I believe they're gonna utilize closer to the minimum 20.
Yes. I think we have...
Yeah, I believe it says...
...a couple places where, in the single-family area, we're using the 25s.
Yeah.
And in the patio areas is where we're using the 20s.
Take advantage of those smaller lots.
Yes.
There's sidewalks on both sides, right?
Correct.
That'll be a nice effect.
Yeah.
I think throughout the whole neighborhood.
I agree. The sidewalks go all the way to the cluster mailbox area.
Yes, they do.
Do I see a gap there?
That's the, that's the sidewalk on that side. This is the sidewalk on the inside, and then there's a cross connector sidewalk right in here if you go from, from the parking spots through to the gazebo itself.
So, where the parking spots are, the sidewalk goes around the back of those?
Correct.
Okay.
Comes here, goes around it. The right-of-way makes it a little confusing to read there, because the sidewalk stays within that area, and the ADA parking space is located here because that's the area where we have 2% grades.
Okay.
And over on this side, it's steeper than 2%, so we could not accommodate the ADA there.
Sure.
We've met the federal standards.
I'm just curious, maybe you don't know the answer yet. On lot 1 and 19, which way would the houses face?
Up face to the front of the street. We will not have any houses facing onto this entry street itself, so we want that to just be a throat to come in, and then at this point, you can go to the small core area here, or go off to this one, or continue on back to the single-family.
There's common area between lots 1 and 19 and the road, correct?
Yes, correct. That's also, of course, set this light gray color right here. Right here is open space, so it ensures that the house would position on that must come out onto this street here and back then on 2nd, or 2nd Camp Road.
We're in the preliminary plan mode. You'll see this plan one more time.
And you're thinking full circulation both directions on all, on all these streets?
Yes, yes.
Peeling out, little picture.
Any audience comments? May I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the Venetia, I'm sorry, the Sugar Brook Preliminary Plan, based upon the planning staff recommendations inclusive of numbers 1 through 24, with number 14 to be amended to say a portion of open space D or A.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good night. Good night.
All right. Item 8C, Planning Commission Recommendation, zoning ordinance amendment, Section 440, Township決定.
Seth's gonna walk you through this zoning amendment.
So, we recently embarked on some changes to the fee schedule, and that kind of shifted into some of those zoning ordinance, because we changed some things in the fee schedule that you have to then change references in the zoning ordinance. I'll start with the zoning ordinance. We made some amendments to our definition of what is an accessory structure. We basically amended that definition to be a little bit more precise, include additional things that weren't originally enumerated, greenhouses, retaining walls of a certain height, those types of things. So, it's very clear in our ordinance is what exactly is an accessory structure. Additionally, this one is what kind of came exactly out of the fee schedule. In our old fee schedule, we had what was called water course and drain permit. It was supposed to be issued by the township engineer for any activities in regard to changing or affecting a water course. We don't issue those permits. Those are done through the conservation district, through MDS permits, so we struck that completely out of the fee schedule, struck it from our zoning ordinance entirely, and had to go through a couple different sections and find where it existed and erase it as well. We didn't want any confusion. Somebody read that and that it not existed in the fee schedule or anything. This is the first full-on fee schedule update for the planning and building department since 2009, so we wanted to go in and address some fees that have kind of lagged behind in terms of what our true costs are, and we also try to make them a little more rounder numbers just for simplicity's sake. In terms of any big items, we took out some minor language in regard to state fees for building permits. We just said that it's gonna change as the state changes, because we don't want to be changing our fee schedule every time the state determines that they need to change their fee for building permits. Again, we got rid of water course and drain permits.
Can I ask, why did we came up with $61?
For which fee?
The building permits for accessory structures, 120 square feet or larger. And there's also a reason why we reduced it. Seems like 500 to 120 is a, I mean, that's a, that's a big difference, right?
Well, that was, it was a bit of an issue in, the fee schedule did not read appropriately.
Okay.
We had to drop that 500 to 120, because if you, if you read our fee schedule verbatim, we actually had a gap, that if you were over a certain size but under a certain size, you might not have had to pay for a building permit. Our fee schedule wasn't covering the entire spectrum of building sizes, so we had to drop 500 to 120 to ensure that we're covering everything and all of the accessory structures that could exist in the township. If you have something that's over 100, it's 121 square feet, it's a certain cost, and you're gonna have X permit, but it really helped clean things up. In regard to the $61, that wasn't a change we made, it was just the existing fee. It's usually a very small project, and we think that $61 covers our costs efficiently. There's no issue with that amount.
It's an odd number.
It is, it is a strange number.
It is.
There's truth to that. We made some amendments to sign permit fees. We also made it a little bit simpler. Previously, you were paying an extra $10 if you had illumination in your sign and this and that. We just made it flat fees across the board. It includes illumination or it doesn't include illumination. We increased the fee for occupancy permits for both renters and non-residential buildings. In regard to application and hearing fees, we made some changes to the zoning hearing board. We increased fees a little bit. We actually found that in some cases, our commercial fee was not covering the costs associated with the zoning hearing board in regard to the portal border postings, especially if you had order transkip, those get very costly, so we increased that a little bit to make sure we're covering our costs completely. We also increased through some, some outside research in the surrounding communities, site plan escrow amounts. We found typically that we were going through the initial amount rather quickly, so we wanted to increase it to ensure that there's no issues moving forward, any site plan approvals or reviews, that we're covering our escrow accounts a little bit further along throughout the review process. Construction appeals board, we've kind of, we just increased a marginal amount to make sure that we're covering the costs associated with it. We removed monuments as part of an engineering, as part of an escrow for a subdivision, we migrated that into an actual fee.
Just, the reason why we did that was, it's an escrow, that means it's... Just the reason why we did that was, it's an escrow, that means it's the responsibility of the developer and their surveyors to put them in, and we're chasing them to try to get those in. Now that we made it a fee, when the sub, the project is completely done or close to being done, all the homes are built, we have the money to pay gateway to go in and just put those monuments in place.
Just get it done. The last relatively major change was regard to grading permit fees. The grading permit fee schedule prior to this amendment had, I don't know, 12 different cost ranges. We just considered that to be excessive, so we trimmed it down to five and just made it a lot simpler for anybody getting a grading permit to be able to self-calculate and for us to calculate on our end. Council is going to look at these amendments at a public hearing on March the 23rd. We're looking for a recommendation from Planning Commission tonight for both the zoning ordinance amendment and the fee schedule.
The addition to the accessory building definition, was that in reaction to anything in particular or was it just based on review of other townships? I mean, I wouldn't want somebody to just buy a lot and build a whole one. I understand that.
Well, in actuality, you could not do that.
Yeah.
You have to have a principal structure on a lot to be able to build an accessory structure, so. I think it kind of came down to, we were getting a lot of questions of, well, is this an accessory structure? Is this an accessory structure? So we just wanted to make it a little bit clearer. Now, it does not include everything, but we tried to capture the majority of what we receive in terms of accessory building permit applications.
Has that always been the case where you cannot put an accessory structure on a lot that does not have a?
Principal structure.
And so is there, are there cases where there's been variance for that or what are, I know it doesn't happen very often, but I have seen within the township where somebody will buy, you know, they buy two lots because lots, they're too small, they want to have two, and then do they, and then they want to use one lot for the house and then maybe they do want to put a pool on or they do want to put something on the other lots, and then do they?
In that case, they would have to consolidate the two lots.
Then they consolidate them, okay.
There are cases where we do have that. Someone buys two.
Two lots, right.
And puts a pool on it, and it's a little unclear in the law as to whether or not they do have to consolidate because we have some that do and some that don't.
But I guess here, what we're saying is that if they don't consolidate, then they can't put it on.
True.
Because we're not letting them have an accessory. I mean, I just myself, I would rather have somebody rather than squeeze in a pool plus a poolhouse plus a, into one lot, purchase two and not make that so difficult for somebody.
Have the extra space to do it.
And have the extra space and just use it, so.
I think there's one in Aaron's neighborhood that has a house on one lot and then they built the pool on the other lot.
Aaron's one of the Woodlands.
There's a few throughout the Peters.
I know there's one in the township that's got a hockey rink on it.
Yeah.
That's all on one lot. That's all on one lot.
There's a couple of those. Just one.
But for whatever you want to use, so you don't think this impedes somebody's ability to do that in any way?
No.
Okay.
When you mentioned monument, is that monument sign?
Monument is a, it's a survey point that gets established when the plan is being laid out so that surveyors know where they are, right?
So later on, somebody can come back in and recreate what was on the plan for recording and know exactly where they are in space based on where it was originally intended to be built.
They're concrete circular things in the ground.
Is that, it looks like it's added, so that's something new?
Yes, yes.
And again, I think what you're saying was that before the change, somewhere between 120 feet and 500 feet, there would be no need at all or something like that?
There was some weird gray area there, yeah.
There was gray area, there was question whether or not you needed a zoning permit or a building permit. We just made it clear that it's a building permit.
And are we talking, so I'm just trying to envision 120, you know, square feet. Are we talking with like, they want to put up a place set, they have to get a, like, put up a swing set?
I mean, if it's 10 by 12 or greater, yeah.
Some of these swing sets get pretty.
Pretty excessive.
Large and we want them to be set back properly.
Sure, there's also a height restriction too, right?
There's a height restriction.
Yeah.
For a while there, we were seeing a lot of those big, lowly put place structures.
We have one in our yards, yeah.
So sometimes they do require permit, sometimes they do not.
Okay. And is, the building permit then is that somebody's going out and checking to make sure that it's not stuck in there?
Built right, set back properly.
And we have the staff available that can go and get out there and get that stuff done quickly so people aren't waiting?
Yes.
On the fees shall be paid to Peters Township to cover the following. Are those escrow accounts as well? The same section of the monument was, is that, or is that to be billed? Number two, escrow shall be charged. Number three, is that an escrow as well?
Where's he at, Seth? Those are fees, the hydrant is a fee and...
Cost to install streetlights.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't, I'm, streetlights, is that in the fee schedule now?
Under final plat fees, 95-15, under.
Number three.
Under B?
B3.
Three. Is that an escrow or is that just built?
Those are just built fees.
For the street signs?
This entire section?
The whole section.
Well, street signs are fees, hydrants a fee.
Yeah.
Those are all fees.
Yeah, it's just a build fee.
Those are fees. The escrows are not shown there.
Okay.
There are escrows as well.
Is there a reason for the, when requesting a stenographer for the hearing, you didn't then add language there that says that, you know, that the applicant shall cover the cost of the stenographer, whatever that may be?
Are you talking about for the construction appeals board?
Yeah, just because, I mean, if you said it was, you know, the last time these were amended was 10 years ago.
Well, for the current construction appeal board, if they want us to have a stenographer, it's an increased fee of 450.
No, no, I see that, I understand that. I'm just saying that on other fees, I've seen the hearing, you said that.
Like the zoning hearing board?
Right, like you're going to cover whatever the cost of that is, because I'm just thinking that right now, maybe a hundred dollar difference is fine, but in five years or in three years or in six years, or you have a hearing that goes, I've seen hearings that go 45 minutes and you see hearings that go two and a half hours.
Yeah, that's a good question. The zoning hearing board always has a court reporter, so it'd be kind of, I mean, the intent is to have that built in then.
Right.
Built into their fee.
Right.
If, if the hearing, someone appeals a zoning hearing board decision and they appeal it to court and the, maybe there's someone in the audience that is opposing the variance that the zoning hearing board granted.
Right.
They would pay for the.
For the transcript.
Transcript.
Sure. Okay, so then this, where it says, construction code board of appeals hearing, so the hearing itself, we have, and if they ask for a stenographer, we've decided that that increased cost is only $100?
It'd be 150.
Three to four, okay, so $150.
Correct.
And again, my only question of these at that, is that hearing?
Right.
And that stenographer cost?
Should it just be an open-ended?
Is dependent upon, I'm just saying that it's dependent upon how long they're there, how long the hearing is, how many, you know, what they have to do. And while I say, see like today, you could say like, oh, 150 bucks more seems like a lot, if the last time we amended these was 11 or 12 years ago, how long is that price increase going to hold versus where you find yourselves in the hole again?
Right.
And is there a way to just say, shall be $450, but, or and, or to the extent that this doesn't cover the cost of the hearing? I don't know, just something to think about maybe. Just because, like I said, I mean, those stenographer charges can be, can be a lot.
I think 150 is, I think that's a pretty reasonable, in regard, all I ever see is for zoning hearing board, we don't get any construction, I think that would pretty much, but like you said, as today, it works, but 10 years from now, is that still going to work?
Five, or just whatever.
We kind of, you know, it's been, since 2009, we kind of track what those.
We keep a pretty good eye on it.
Those bills come in, we see what they are, what they cover in our costs.
Right. And so are we short by $150 most times or are we short by, you know, less than that or, do that gives a little bit of room for growth or are we trying to cover?
I think we pick, well, we don't get many construction appeal boards.
Sure.
And I think we just, we identified that it's not been addressed since 2009 and we saw that for zoning hearing board, definitely an increased cost for the court reporter, so we tried to do an in-kind increase for the construction appeal board as an anticipatory fee increase, I think.
You know, I think we've had two construction appeals boards in the last 10-plus years.
So then it's not something that's coming up?
Right.
Okay, all right, that's fair.
So it's a recommendation to council on the fee scheduling and the zoning amendment.
Yeah, I guess my only other comment is, I don't know that I'm opposed to it, but just, so for the, I mean, how often are we having, I get what you're trying to do, which is to simplify it, you know?
Grading.
But the grading permits, but for the people, for like a small, small project or whatever, going from 600 to 1500 is, you know, is quite a leap for, do you think it's?
Well, 10,000, that's, that deals with 10,000.
10,000 cubic yards.
That's a big, that's a fairly.
That's not a small project.
That's a large project.
So where's, so you think just as far as, that used to be 600 bucks, do you think that was?
Probably 40, 50,000 dollars or so.
That was pretty, that was very under.
Yeah, I mean, if you're doing 10,000 cubic yards, you're looking at $40,000 project cost, so.
Yeah.
That's not necessarily a small project.
Okay.
In our engineer.
It's just, it's a big leap, is all I'm saying.
Right, right, right.
It's going from 600 to 1500 is a big leap, but if, but the analysis is that compared to 10 years ago, that that's fair.
I just wanted to ask a question. And then, you know, the 1,000 to 1500, or, sorry, the 1,000 to 10,000 is going to cover those kind of smaller projects, especially even up to the 1,000 cubic yard range.
Yeah, and that, you know, I just noticed is proportionally, the person who used to have $45,000 one is only suffering a $300 increase whereas the 10,000 and one is, is a, you know, it's a $900 increase. If overall, like I said, that's something you guys took into account on final, I just wanted to go there.
Not often used, there's not a lot of that kind of.
Individual grading.
There's a few, but not a lot.
Okay.
All together.
Well, it's a part of the development.
Right. And like Seth said, we study what other communities' fees are.
I could bring up the spreadsheet.
Kind of use that as a guide.
It wasn't fine.
So we're in line with whatever?
We tried our best.
Way out of line.
Right in the middle.
Can I get a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion. The Planning Commission approved the recommendation to the zoning hearing, zoning ordinance amendment of 440 Township Code.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Do we need to give you one of the planning portions?
Well, just to be clear, that's the zoning and fee schedule update.
So it's 440 and chapter 195.
Aye.
Can we just, should we just do a summary?
No, that's good.
Okay.
You acknowledge it, you're comfortable with the fees.
And fee schedule. All right, moving on to the planning portion. Any miscellaneous issues?
I don't have any, unless you have any.
Wash your hands.
All right, Seth? Any adjournments?